Because I grew up in Pittsburgh.
The September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Crowe School District Board of Directors is called to order. I checked with Tina and Beth King, would you mind meeting us on the pledge tonight?
Do I stand?
Please.
It's been a long time. But pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The secretary please call the roll.
Director Apple.
Here.
Director Luke.
Here.
Director Monchar.
Here.
Director Sinset.
Here.
Director Pushkar.
Here.
Director O'Brien.
Here.
Director Zlebski.
Here.
Director Bozianum.
Here.
Director Schreiber.
Here. There's a moment at the beginning of each meeting where we invite the public to ask questions about items over on our agenda. I do see several people that would like to talk tonight or ask questions about items. I would ask because all of the people have asked about the police officer item. Our superintendent has a short presentation, he's going to answer a lot of questions. If those don't answer the questions, then you can absolutely ask those questions after the presentation. So if we can hold those questions for a moment, I'll turn it over to Dr. Schreiber and have him provide the update.
What if I have about the personnel? I want to talk about that.
So after I'm done with my report, we'll open it up to public comment. I think it'll help, at least with, in a lot of cases, with the superintendent's report, a lot of what's on the board agenda. I try to preface and give a little bit more intel and information, but certainly you'll be able to.
So you'll address about the new principal, about a new principal?
Whatever comment you have, you'll be able to.
Okay, I just want me to try not to get skipped over.
And if we do, just, you know.
Oh, I will.
We appreciate it. Thank you, Director Schreiber. So as Director Schreiber mentioned, on the agenda this evening, we placed an item for school police officer as a motion for the board's consideration for approval. It's a first and very important step in the process of defining that role of school police officer. One of the things that I did notice when I signed up for the public comment is that some people indicated that they were interested in commenting on the SRO. And so there is a difference between an SRO and an SPO. What's on the board agenda item for tonight is an SPO. So just to give a little bit of information on the slight difference between those two pieces of terminology. An SPO is a school police officer, an SRO is a school resource officer. The difference between those two pieces is that in SRO, the district would work very closely with the municipality in which that school resource officer was assigned from. So for example, if the school resource officer came from Crafton or Carnegie or from Robinson Township, then we work very closely with that municipality. As a school police officer, it is a district position, which provides the district with more opportunity to have more ownership over that position. The district fully undertakes the responsibility for the employment, the hiring, the overseeing of the position, the writing of the job description. So it provides the latitude for the school district, much more control. So the piece that the administration considered within this recommendation is taking a look at those two pieces, looking at the framework for what we recognize to be an essential position moving forward to make sure that we have all those parameters in place, that we have much more ownership in that process. A little bit of hindsight into school security in general is that the state of Pennsylvania, within their last passing of their budget for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, what Governor Shapiro also put in was an omnibus bill, which also goes back and it revises school code. So part of that school code, along with the budget, one of those pieces that was put in there was that the requirement for school districts across the state of Pennsylvania to have one school security personnel across, for each district. So it's a requirement now from the state that will be enacted in the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year. We're currently in the setting of the twenty-four, twenty-five, so it's not yet required. But next year it will be required for all school districts to have a security personnel in place. A school police officer would meet the requirements of that omnibus bill and that requirement. In addition to that, we believe that state recognizes the importance of helping to provide funding for those positions. So they have a PCCT grant that is out there for this year. And normally that school safety and mental health grant is a reoccurring grant every year that the governor has committed towards continuing that grant, which will provide funding for an SPO, school security, SRO. It also provides latitude to provide additional mental health support and so on. So within the budget, within the omnibus bill change from the school code, this step will cover us for the requirements of the twenty-five, 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 twenty-six school year. If the board moves forward and approves the SPO this evening, basically at the same time, they'll be giving the administration the directive to move forward with the creation of that job, the responsibilities, taking a look at the role, taking into consideration the environment, the selection process. So as I mentioned at the very beginning, it's the first step in the process with many other steps to follow. And I think doing it in this way, one, I think it caught the attention of much of our public, which is fantastic, because we appreciate your insight, your support for school safety. Nonetheless, will help us with coming out with a transparent method of how are we going through and creating this job description? How are we going through and going through the interview process? And making it a collective effort to make sure that when we move forward with the initiative, that it takes a lot of data points into consideration. So the primary role of the SPO will be to provide safety and security. But we also take a look at it as an opportunity to build positive relationships with our staff and with our students and community at large. The officer that we look for would be very proactive in a lot of different ways for safety education at both the elementary level and the secondary level, conflict resolution, supportive interventions, rather than strictly looking at enforcement types of policy and a role there. So as we develop that role and take a look into it, it certainly our commitment to making sure that our students feel safe, that they feel secure, and they feel valued. So as I mentioned, it's beginning part of the process. Our goal is to move through the process swiftly, but at the same time making sure we're making good decisions, but looking to fill the position by sometime in the spring, early two thousand twenty-five, ahead of the twenty-five, twenty-six mandate. Also on the board agenda is some personnel items. One of those items is the resignation of Mrs. Mazako. She recently accepted a director position in another school district. We offer our genuine thanks to Mrs. Mazako for her leadership over the past few years at Carnegie Elementary School. Along with several notable accomplishments, one of the pieces that Mrs. Mazako brought into Carnegie Elementary School was the implementation of Matt's Makerspace, which has brought in additional supplies, hands-on resources for our children to engage in, to be creative and opportunities to explore critical thinking types of skills as well. The space fosters a love for innovation and helps develop our 21st century skills moving forward. She's also played a vital role in overseeing the Carnegie renovation project, providing input on the space, making recommendations for that moving forward. So on behalf of the district, we wish her all the best in her future endeavors. Finally, on the board agenda, we also have wanted to take the opportunity to publicly thank Subaru of South Hills. Mrs. Mazako also reached out to Subaru of South Hills. Their generosity through their Adopt a Classroom program, which is offering the district $10,000 to help support the classroom teachers at Carnegie Elementary School. That $10,000 gets divided evenly amongst that staff, so that they can purchase supplies for students in the classroom and gives them a lot of latitude with that $10,000. So it's very generous on behalf of South Hills Subaru through that program to have a direct impact on what our children are programming here. So a sincere thanks to them. And we look forward to a continued commitment with South Hills Subaru and anyone else that wants to help donate money towards advancing our initiatives and our goals. That was my report this evening. So hopefully that addresses some of the questions that the open forum has had. Are there people on the list that you'd still like to ask questions or if I, I see the number one on the list, Bethany, you're nodding your head yes.
Brittany. Sorry. Yeah, that's okay. So I'm Brittany, Beau Von Mickens. I have James, who is over there, he's in third grade at Carnegie. Hey, we'll be there next year, my two older boys. And my husband's gone through the Carleton School District, so I'm a Pittsburgh Public Stanley grad, so. First on the principal side, so I just have a couple of questions. When you guys, one, who's going to be filling in when she is gone? I don't know if you guys hold her for sixty days or what the case is. And two, when you're in search of a new principal, are you prioritizing looking for someone that is, one, diverse, two, works with a diverse population, and three, would maybe have extensive background in working with students with English as a second language, seeing as how now Carnegie is now the school for English with second language speaking kids? So I think that is a huge thing that needs to be thought out when you're interviewing candidates, because if you hire someone that does not have any experience with that, that would be a shame. Because that is, since you made that huge change, that person needs to be a priority, those students need to be a priority now for the district. So I hope you think about those things. But who's going to be in charge?
Brittany, one thing I would ask of you is, did you happen to read over my notes or anything of that nature?
So it's very hard, it's really, really hard on, I was just saying, on the cell phone to read it.
No, I'm saying like my own personal notes. A lot of what.
Oh!
You read it.
A lot of what you shared there is outstanding insight on your behalf, I think. Carnegie Borough, Carnegie, the population, the students, the rich culture that we have there, I think does demand a special leader in that building and for the community as well. ESL population, as you've mentioned, continues to grow. It's one of the things that we're taking a separate look at, not just necessarily with the principal position, but then also with other resources that we can provide as well for the ESL community and the other aspects where it has an impact on all of our students as well. So to answer your questions, without getting too much into, yes, a lot of what you shared there, definitely somebody that has some experience with building level leadership or even district office, central office type of experience as well, with the potential of really taking a look at that position and how an individual can have the best impact, not only at Carnegie, but then across the district as well. Throughout the interview process, for any position, we always take a look at diversified types of candidates for that position and leadership. Doesn't necessarily drive the selection, but certainly something that we want to make sure that we're taking into consideration to be a good solid leader there. So like I said, a lot of your insights there, they're on target, and those are the things that we're certainly committed to taking a look at.
And so who would be in charge when she leaves?
When she leaves, so as far as state of Pennsylvania, you also did your homework on the sixty day hold. Districts are able to hold employees who are leaving public schools for a period of sixty calendar days, based on the date of resignation. That takes us somewhere into the area of November. So we'll take a look at two different components. To be able to hire a full-time person in that position within sixty days is quite a challenge, because most likely we'll be pulling somebody from another public education institute who would then also hold their person for sixty days, which now takes us out anywhere between ninety and hundred and twenty days. So it's very possible that the district could consider taking a look at a retiree, somebody who has come through, who has served as a building principal, could be somebody who's served as a curriculum director, could be a director of special ed, could be a superintendent, who knows? To take a look at retirees that are out there in the event, to fill in that short-term gap. Moving forward after that, then it's the determination of when is the best time to post that position. So the interim person could be there for a short period of time, could be there for an extended period of time until we find, I think that dedication towards finding the right fit is where we really want to be. I'd rather sacrifice thirty days on one end than trying to meet a deadline and settling for a candidate that isn't the best fit for us.
Yes, I agree.
So there's a lot that gets into that consideration, but yes. So who will be in charge of that, to be determined?
Okay, thank you. So in regards to the officer, and you did answer some of my questions, I just have some additional. And I realize you probably aren't going to have the answers tonight, which is fine, but I will be attending your forum at the elementaries at Carnegie, so hopefully maybe you can have some of them. So I just want you to know, I stand here tonight as a mother, a mental health professional in Pittsburgh Public, and someone that has lived experience with two school shootings in two years. So I worked at Oliver City when they had me, and we lost two students to gun violence back-to-back years. So I don't stand here lightly. The first question, again, I was raised in Pittsburgh Public, is what other security measures will be implemented along with the resource, the school police officer? While the officer is a good step, there's no, there are other preventative measures that could be put in place, so metal detectors. It's not like a prison, nobody, anybody you talk to that works in a school with metal detectors doesn't feel like a prison. Bag checking. And tonight is a prime example. I walked right through the front door and there was nobody there to escort me, nobody. I could have walked through the whole building and put something in. That scares me in today's climate. Two, you kind of touched upon it, is having, since you will be able to hire the officer yourselves, is that you can implement different training techniques. As you're aware, the school-to-prison pipeline is a real concern when you work with schools that have police officers. Research shows that having police officers, it does deter fights. However, in some instances, schools that had resource officers saw between thirty-five to fifty percent increase in school suspensions, expulsions, and arrests. Students with disabilities were five times higher likely to be expelled, suspended, or arrested. And people of color, indigenous people, and black people were suspended at a five times higher rate or expelled a three times higher rate and arrested two times higher rate than those of their white peers or people without disabilities. Will the district look into developing a memorandum of understanding with the school police officer? And that if the incident would have never needed an officer without having one, would that officer be called or not called for minor infractions? Will they get specialized training to better prepare them to build relationship and de-escalation techniques? And are we going to ensure that proper data is collected on the activities of the officers at the rates of kids are being suspended, expelled, or even arrested? And are we looking to add, as I said, other resources such as mental health, social workers, and other preventative measures? While you may not again have these answers tonight, I'm just asking you to think about a couple of these things while you're looking into hiring a police officer. Because again, as someone that's worked there, I can tell you that though the shootings happened outside the building, they never were in the building, but we have metal detectors, we bag check. My sister worked at an elementary school where they were able to find two guns in school backpacks of elementary students who were just bringing them in to show a friend, but they deterred a school, a potential school shooting because they had security guards and, you know, backpack searches and stuff like that. So I'm not saying like, it may, some people may say it feels like a prison, but as someone that works in a school every day and would put my life on the line for the students I work for, it makes me feel better that they backpack check, that there is security guards and that there is metal detectors. Because again, I walked through this building tonight and nobody stopped me. No, one person stopped me. I could easily, if I was a student, hide a gun in my locker and no one's going to know. So that's all I have for tonight, sorry.
No, very good feedback. It's first of the public comment, because I think what it does is it also ensures that people's voices are heard towards their concerns, especially as we develop school security measures. But to give a little bit of a high level, we do have our school safety and security coordinator, who reviews our safety plans, works with not only the local area authorities, but then also FBI, United States Secret Service as well, to review those plans and meet regularly, not necessarily regularly, but meet with those groups to review those plans, make sure that they're updated, and then also provide them access to the different types of drills we conduct. So for example, this week was school safety, going through each of our, each of the drills, making sure that awareness for those, setting up that common language that's in place. Some of the other things that you brought up there, I think also fall into the category of, I believe it's on the board agenda tonight, is for the administration to conduct assessment of organizational capacity. One of those pieces also is to holistically take a look at personnel in the area of ESL, life skills, autistic support, regular programming, director-level positions, to make sure that we have the personnel that's able to process the myriad of situations that we deal with day in, day out, but also in particular in the area of safety. Mental health is also an area that I think the district has grown and I think has been a pioneer in the area with the institution of the children in each of our buildings and our commitment to mental health in a lot of that regard. District psychologist, now our acting director of Special Education and People's Services, Dr. Searcy, with her leadership in that area too, to really make sure that we can cover all of those areas. So as you mentioned, not going to be able to answer all of those, but if you are at the upcoming superintendent forums, I'd be very interested in letting me peek at your notes this time too, just to make sure that I have everything as far as your concerns captured as well.
I can send you any notes.
I appreciate that, that would be great, I appreciate that. And then also you had mentioned just the impact on suspension rates, discipline, those kind of things spiking, especially with minority populations, people of color, is to make sure that we're tracking that data proactively, to review some of our data that has occurred prior to the implementation of a school resource or a school police officer and then what that data looks like afterwards, I think will be valuable information, not necessarily to design that position, but to make sure that as we do annual reviews on that position, to see if there are areas of concern that we can make adjustments to avoid, for sure. Because the prison pipeline research that you referenced also is very prevalent in a lot of areas too that we need to be very conscientious of.
Thank you, I appreciate that, because my children are, you know, biracial, and so that is something that's big on my mind, is making sure that education is, there's equitable education throughout the district. So I appreciate all of that, thank you.
Going to the second, Tina, do you have additional questions on the open forum?
I sent an email with my interest, so I hope you are able to take that into consideration. And I look forward to understanding that as you work through the process. The only other thing that Darcy won, Darcy couldn't be here tonight. She was interested in learning more about the Great Speech Service Agreement that's on the agenda tonight. So if you could just speak a little bit more to that, is that something that we have had in place? What it is, or is it something new? How will it benefit us? How will we leverage service?
So the Great Speech Contract is for a homebound situation, a student that's medically fragile and unable to come into the school, so we'll be contracting with them to provide services for that student in the home setting.
Thank you.
Tina, anything else or are we good?
We're good for now. I have one thing at the end.
Next up is April, April Hawk.
Hi, I'm April Hawk. I also have a third grader at Carnegie Elementary and a rising kindergartner. I just wanted to get a little sort of clarification on background and the concerns or suggestions, even if you would welcome them. You had mentioned that you see this, the school police officer as being an essential position. Is that because of the legislation or is that because of your own consideration and analysis?
I think it will be an essential position for the district. One, yes, it meets the requirements. Two, making that we have the ownership over the position, it makes it more essential to our role in being able to provide services to our children and to our staff. More along those lines is what I was looking for with that terminology.
Okay.
Person needs to be well embedded into what we do and how we operate and how we communicate in our activity.
Thank you. I think I'm still questioning whether we need the person, so just to echo some of Brittany's sentiments, you know, there are a lot of the data around school resource officers, school security guards, and school police officers. There really isn't much that indicates their effectiveness within the school. But what there is, is a lot of data that shows the harmful effects particularly on underrepresented populations. I think we, that's a big consideration for our district, given our demographics. There, I think there's a lot of, anecdotally, a lot of really good stories of how, you know, these security personnel have been able to build relationships within the community. But I think the opportunity for that to happen is when the position is well considered, that students and families and maybe even the broader community are involved in defining the role, the position. What are their duties? Think really thinking about what are the particular interventions, discipline? How does that all play out? And when should that person, you know, be included in any of that? Sort of looking at what would happen if they weren't here. I was, I've just been trying to, you know, learn a little bit more about all of this. And there's Strategies for Youth is a national organization that looks at youth interactions with law enforcement. They have a really great and expansive checklist for families, community members, when it comes to the MOU that Brittany referenced, a lot of the disciplinary measures. So I would encourage everyone to, you know, consider that as a potential resource as you move forward in defining the role. Can I ask you a couple more questions?
Are they related to the agenda?
Yes. So if this is a district position, how will this person be split across schools? Or would they be exclusively based here?
That's part of the defining the role position, but we do look for the person to have presence in all three buildings.
I don't, I have a faulty memory, so I have to. And then Brittany had also mentioned a couple other strategies and supports that we can utilize to create a better climate on campus. I think there's also really great data that suggests that law enforcement and a security-based approach to, to a lot of the things that are top of mind, right? Like, we want to minimize fights, but there are school shootings are now part of, I think, all of our thoughts, probably on a daily basis. They occur, you know, a lot less frequently than it feels. But I think bringing these officers into the school, I sort of worry that it gives people a false sense of security. And so I think about, you know, the effectiveness, but then also perception. So I just encourage everybody to think about that as well, and I think that's where families and students can really come into play. But you had mentioned that the grant could also help with some of these other mental health supports. Restorative justice is one of the things that, you know, is a primary focus of mine. Can you detail any of the other specific strategies, programs that you might be looking at where we could utilize those grand dollars beyond just funding this position?
What we've used the funding for in the past was for a lot of our mental health services that we provide to our students. One, partially paying for AHN and their services, that they provide any outreach, support, school-based mental health therapy. And then we've also used it for other pieces of hardware, like additional cameras, alertis program, which helps with mass communication types of things. Wrap their system for security as people enter and leave the building to make sure we know that, we know who's in our building at given times. So the majority of this grant, the way that it's written, is for any type of, any type of safety measures that we deem appropriate to go with there. So there's a lot of different funding that we use it for.
Thank you.
Erin.
Hi. Hi, my name's Erin Manifold, and I have a fourth grader and a first grader at Carnegie Elementary, Aria and Rowan. And I'm coming at these comments from a parent perspective and also from a teacher perspective, one who has worked in an elementary school with metal detectors and bag checks. And we've had two guns and two knives intercepted in the last five years. So also coming from that perspective as a teacher, these talks about, you know, increasing school security, I think would, whether it is a false sense or not, make students and teachers specifically, and parents, because I am on both sides of that fence, feel more secure and therefore feel more valued. You mentioned that that was a, you know, priority to make the students feel more valued and secure and safe. Thank you for clarifying the difference between the two positions, because I was unaware. And I think that the SPO sounds as if, you know, that when the district has more control, I think that that is a really great thing. And you mentioned the focus on more conflict resolution and mediation. And, you know, I'm hoping that they would get proper training for like trauma-informed practices and things like that. But I do wonder if this is something that, you know, the board truly believes in and. But I do wonder if this is something that, you know, the board truly believes in and, you know, wants to put a lot of thought and energy and effort, or if it is like checking a box for the state. I had brought this up last year at one of the forums, and I mean, I felt like I was kind of scoffed at for bringing it up. I know that as time goes on, there are many more incidents of, you know, small-scale violence and larger-scale violence. So I just had a wondering as we're, you know, just talking about the creation of this position, because I am unaware, what is, are we able to access discipline data for the high school? I just think about my own children, whom my daughter will be there in a few years, and I'm just curious about what goes on at the high school, and, you know, hoping for transparency. Are there a lot of physical fights? And are there suspensions and expulsions for that? How are those, how are those issues currently being handled? If there are physical altercations, you know, what's the protocol for that? So I just have those questions, and I didn't know if that was data that was available to the public, but I think that that is definitely something to think about as this position is created and the roles and duties are defined. So I don't know if that's something you can answer, or maybe, you know, bring back to the table.
Now, a couple things that you can bring up there. There are state reportable offenses that the district is required to file with the state, that then do become records. So there is data, but broadly, records, we don't share very specific data. What we share more in particular is the student handbook, as far as that guide for how student discipline is managed. Student discipline is something that we still look forward to building principals taking full ownership of, of school discipline and making sure that they manage the buildings, not having that on its fault on a school police officer or any security measures, that that person is there for entirely separate role, and those lines should not be blurred with school discipline. The one piece you mentioned as far as checking the box, naturally if it's a, if it is a requirement of the state, yes, in one sense it is, it's checking the box, but there are a lot of state regulations, a lot of guidelines that the district is responsible for adhering to, for which we check those boxes, but at the same time, we use those as opportunities to go far and above what that mandated requirement is and put it more in the scope of what the purpose is for, for the district, so to give you an example with curriculum. Curriculum in particular, we're required to have certain criteria, certain standards. Our goal is to go above those school standards, to shoot well above and beyond the measures of the PSSA or the Keystone exams, to make sure that we have more ownership over curriculum. So very similar to, in this particular case, is that, yes, it's a mandate, but then at the same time, we have the latitude and flexibility to make sure that we put it into something that works for Carleton that's specifically designed for us. And the other piece that blended in from a few of the topics there is just that, at the top of school culture. And school culture counts, it's one of the most leading indicators of how districts can create an environment for their children that has the biggest impact on learning. It's one of the biggest pieces, school culture has an impact on learning, but it also has a huge impact on school safety, and values, feeling connected to their schoolhouse. So a lot of things, and that is actually one of our focuses this year, is taking a look at, at school culture, creating that connectedness amongst our students and our staff and our community at large. Without school culture, then I think that's where you do run into some of those challenges and difficulties that you're not proud of.
I mean, I was just curious, are there physical altercations happening at the high school, generally speaking, and like what happens? Are the teachers breaking up fights? Are we letting kids fight, are kids not fighting? I really don't know, and I'm just curious.
Yeah, without getting into too much detail.
Yeah, just because I know I've gotten hurt breaking up fights, I've had friends got, you know, and I just didn't know if that was like part of the role and responsibility that we're looking at, or I'm just curious as to what's happening now.
Dr. Sertie, I just wanted to remind everyone that there is a state website, saveschools.ca.gov, and you can draw onto every single district and individual school buildings in the district, and they'll tell you data such as number of fights, drug and alcohol situations, violent issues, how many suspensions, expulsions, and all that data, we're required by the state to report every year, and they upload that, it's a very interactive website, so that all that data is there, it's saveschools.ca.gov.
I mean, I work at a school and I know a lot of these things that happen on a day-to-day basis are not reported into any, you know, database, so I'm just curious, like when there's a physical fight, who, like, is it usually the teachers that are expected to break up those fights, or are no fights really happening? I'm just curious as to what's happening now physically in a space with children when there's a physical fight, or maybe there's no fights, that's what I'm asking.
Like I said, there's none, but I think there's very few here.
Okay, because I'm unaware, so that's great, that's great.
There are very few.
Awesome.
Yep. Erin, any other questions?
I don't think so, I just had, you know, I was wondering about what goes on currently when it comes to any type of physical altercations, because I think that that is going to have to be, you know, clearly defined within that position, so thank you for the opportunity to ask questions.
A quick comment to the floor, thank you for your comments and your ideas, your thoughts. The board has, and the administration has contemplated all of those things in different ways and at different times, that we are all sensitive to the nuance that is surrounding this position. So we have not had this position before, we are creating this new, it is in advance of the state requirement. I think you can infer from that that we're trying to be very intentional, be very thoughtful about how we do this. We're not looking to check a box, next year we're going to have to check a box, we want to do this the right way, and getting feedback from our public and our parents is part of that. So I hope you can feel comfortable that we're taking this seriously and approaching it very thoughtful. Any other forum questions before we move on? No, all right. There is a time at the very end to ask any general questions of the board or administration. Moving on to our agenda, we've got minutes, I'll entertain a motion approved of three minutes under section two.
Second.
Move to second, any questions or discussion? Vote, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. I would report that we had an executive section part of this meeting where we discussed personnel matters, contracts, and safety matters. I will now turn back to Dr. Sertie if there are any remaining items for your superintendent for, nothing else. Okay. Moving on, committee reports from our board members. Parkway West, Director Apple, anything to share about Parkway West?
Thank you, Director Cyber. Thanks. So, we had our meeting on the first Tuesday since January, very early this school year, so any data, I may have changed a bit, but I think it's pretty reflective of what things are right now. I'll start off by saying, you might have, if you have a student out there, might have heard that there was a gas emergency and resulted in early dismissal, and the afternoon was, was a virtual learning day. As it turns out, the welding program, they have empty propane tanks that they, motor tanks that they turn into barbecue pits, and apparently there's oftentimes a bit of residual gas in these tanks, and it doesn't take much of that to really put out an odor. So our building principal smelled it and we took all the appropriate precautions, and like I said, it just happened to be, the wind was just in the right direction and all that, it got in the building, so nothing to worry about there. We had a summer camp program where students can come and Parkway serves nine through 12 grades, but younger students can come and explore in two days the various programs that they have out there, one on one day, one on the next day. They had six hundred, a little over 600 kids come to the summer camp, so which kind of dovetails into the next statistic that I'm going to give you, which is that as of September, well, August, very, the total enrollment out there is 1,410 students, which I'm told is the largest number of students that have ever been at Parkway West, certainly at least since the late 60s. That's 93 students above what last year's enrollment was. So it's growing, good problems to have, but I think we're starting to reach the capacity of the building, and the board is discussing with the administration up there ways to address that. Interestingly, with Carleton, we have 133 students than 10 Parkway West, and given the fact that a graduating class in Carleton is somewhere around that number, that tells you about a quarter of our kids in the nine through 12 are going to Parkway. So we're utilizing the services out there pretty highly, in fact, only one of the district sends a higher percentage of kids in as Cornell. So, let's see, I think that's about all I have. I will tell you though that in my tenure on the board, and I think I've been on Parkway since about 2016, 2017, something like that, just to give you an indication, in September of 2013, there were 639 students attending Parkway, so over that 11 years is more than double. So yeah, like I said, we're looking at ways to address the growth of the student participation out there, but also the safe way that these kids, the education they deserve. That's all I have.
Can I drop in?
Oh, sorry.
To say that those on the board know that in my day job, I work for the Workforce Development Board. Our CEO is the chair of the advisory committee on apprenticeship for the acting secretary of labor for the United States, Julie Sue, and that committee came to visit Pittsburgh last week. We took them on a tour of a lot of pre-apprenticeship and apprenticeship-related sites, starting at the airport, and then they had lunch at Parkway West, and they toured Parkway West, and were very impressed by the programming that happens at Parkway, and by the opportunities that Parkway is building in connection with registered apprenticeship programs and connection with higher education. I think 11 years ago when I started the Workforce Development Board, there was this perception that career technical education was the kind of dumping ground for kids that were good with their hands, that has changed considerably. It is, career technical education means college, it means opportunities, it means graduating from high school with an industry-recognized credential beyond just a high school diploma. So our investments in Parkway, the fact that we're getting a lot of our students to go to Parkway is a really clear way that we are setting students up for success. And there were 35 experts in registered apprenticeships from across the nation who were at that building, and we're very impressed by that, so. So please give my thanks to Dr.
Thank you for, you know, that reminds me, the other thing I wanted to mention was that the German Chamber of Commerce here in Pittsburgh is funding a program for our principal to go over to Germany where their apprenticeship programs are pretty advanced, and, you know, a big part, a larger part actually, is their education, educational environment than maybe we have here. The German Chamber is totally funding it, and the specific apprenticeship programs that our principal will be looking at is Mike Wirth, the principal at Parkway, electronic vehicle apprenticeship programs, so kind of a high-tech thing. You know, just what Director Bushgar has mentioned, you know, we all kind of, we want the best work here, but we also, you know, I can speak for myself, I'd like my kids to succeed, and I'd like them to succeed kind of close, so that, you know, I could see if I had grandkids someday and that sort of thing, so these are the sorts of jobs that, you know, will be built around here, and we'll build our community stronger, so I think it's really important stuff, and I know we can do apprenticeships and sort of kid-based education and that, those sorts of things that are up there, I think, in some of the regions.
Joe, feedback on the camp at Parkway. I know a young lady, during one day in the carpentry shop, made a toolbox, and the second day she treated her family to Chicken Plum and Chum from the Cullen Carpentry Department. So it's a very good camp for, so if there were 600, probably came from Carleton.
I couldn't tell you that, but we drop into all school districts.
Good.
So, you know, good program.
Just one additional comment on the EV technician, the German-American Chamber of Commerce registered the first in the nation EV technician apprenticeship program last month, and the training that has to learn will happen at the CAC West Hill Center right next to Parkway. So the fact that the principal is going to Germany to learn more about the program and go those connections is really an important and solid pathway for young people, especially as EVs and plug-in hybrids and EV buses become more of the market share.
Thank you for all the comments. Director Kuncher, Pathfinder.
Jim, thank you. First of all, you have a new principal at Pathfinder, her name is Renee Kuzusko, and the feedback from parents is that they're pleased with her. We also have a new facilities manager in Dave Masti. For one of my points, I'm going to ask Dr. Sertie, do we have kids at Sunrise in Mon Valley?
We have some at Mon Valley, not at Sunrise.
Okay, okay, so because of all the costs last year, in past years, Carleton got a rebate, considerable rebate, every year. This year, we will not be getting any kids because of cost from Pathfinder, but from Mon Valley, we're going to be getting $2,000, because the Pathfinder budget, it was $16,000 in the red. I'm treasurer of Pathfinder, and our executive team got together and we played PNC against Citizens in July, and we got, with Keith's giving me some economics training, we got 4.75% APR on one of our CDs and 5.05% Keith on another. Thank you. Pathfinder, thanks, that's it, Jim, thanks.
Director Zlotzky, Shazda, anything to go for?
I don't have as many wow factors. I do have something, and thank you to Dr. Sertie for sharing with me. They have scheduled the Shazda Student Conference for April 12 at the Hilton Garden Inn at South Point, so we'll look for more to come to that.
Great, thank you. Director Bugliano, any updates to share?
Not really anything besides the legislature is back in Harrisburg, it's been slow so far, might be a slow fall, but there's not really much of an education, I've heard not many talks because they just came back yesterday.
The budget's passed, so everybody's happy. Great, thank you very much. Dr. Simsek, Foundation.
We have not had a meeting, but we did have the golf outing, so thank you to everybody who came and played and volunteered, and, you know, it's a team effort, it went very smoothly, we wound up with 99 golfers, so, you know, I think I mentioned last meeting, we had to pay for 100, so we only were one short of that. So everything was great with that, thank you, the rain held off, we had a great day. The next event is going to be Purse Bingo, which is November 8th, almost sold out in four days, there are six tickets left for that, so if anybody's interested in Purse Bingo, it's Friday, November 8th, it's going to be at St. Simon and Jude, really big popular event, and if you want a ticket, get in now, so that's it.
Thanks to everybody that did the golf tournament, awesome event, huge turnout, awesome day, well-run, a blast, so. Any questions about today's reports? If not, we will move on, under section four miscellaneous, we have a total of four items, I'll entertain a motion to approve the four items under section four miscellaneous.
Second.
Move to second, thank you, any questions or discussion? Vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Under section five finance, we have four items as well, I'll entertain a motion to approve those, four items under section five.
Second.
Move to second, thank you, any questions or discussion? If not, vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Under personnel, we have two items, I'll entertain a motion to approve both of those items under section six personnel.
Second.
Move to second, thank you, any questions? Any questions or discussion? If not, vote.
I just want to chime in here from the perspective of a board member, one board member, that because school resource officers or school police officers are required now or will be required in twenty five, twenty six, I will support this measure. However, school resource officers and school police officers are associated with an intensification of punitive measures against students, including increasing suspensions, expulsions, and arrests. And as some of our guests have said today, those are disproportionately felt by students of color and students with disabilities. So, we must be intentional about the way that we create this position, and we must leverage community input to make sure that this position works for the district and works on behalf of the students in the district. So, I would like to ask for a few different things because we also know studies from the Rand Corporation and the Brookings Institute, so these are widely respected, nonpartisan institutions, that school resource officers are also associated with increases in product truancy. We know that when students are not in school, that they are less likely to succeed when it comes to making sure that they graduate and have the skills that they need. So, I would like to ask for baseline statistics on suspensions, expulsions, arrests, and truancy disaggregated by race, gender, and ability status provided to the school board now so that we understand what things look like before we implement this position. And then on a semi-annual basis, after the suspension is implemented, so that we can track and regularly take stock of where things are and whether things are working, have positive impacts or negative impacts. The other thing that I think that we need to have in place before we actually vote to hire someone into this position is detailed for approved rules for school police officer conduct and a detailed training plan for not just that school police officer, but every employee in the district. We all agree, or I'm sorry, I should say, I think, and I'm speaking for all of us, that we do not want to see a school police officer become a cudgel and become the only method by which we hold students accountable, and we don't want to impact the school prison pipeline or exacerbate the school prison pipeline. And so, making sure that all employees in the district understand what the responsibilities of that school police officer are versus their responsibilities when it comes to student safety, I think is critically important. I would like to see that developed with significant community input. And by community, I mean not just the administrators and the board, but also teachers, parents, and students. The students are going to be interacting with this individual in a way that none of us in this room, except those tiny people over there, ever will. And so, we need to make sure that they feel very comfortable and they feel like this is an important, positive on their school environment. So, I think those things that really scope out the role of the police officer and that we are very clear and transparent on this is what the expectation is, and these are the ways that we will address anything that goes against that expectation, is what I would expect before we even post.
Which we said.
So, I'd like to also say that, which Director Pushkar said, I agree. As my father was a state trooper, so, I mean, I have maybe a little different perspective regarding police officers because that's, you know, my dad's friends when we were growing up. But I also understand that not everybody has the same experience, which leads me to say that Parkway West hired an SRO last year, I think beginning of last year, and we had a lively discussion about that as well. It's very crucial to get not only the position right, but the right person for the position. It's a very, very big deal because, you know, it's something that can benefit us as a district and the children, and it's also something that's a great risk. And I think that, you know, everyone on this board, most people, we're all very careful people, and we want to do the right thing. And I also appreciate all the comments that have been brought to us, and I invite you to continue the discussion. You know, it's a good point. I was actually, it was a friend of mine, and she has children in Foxchamp, and they have SROs, and the kids, her kids are very, very fond of the SROs. And, you know, I was glad to hear that, you know, and I guess they're well-trained and popular folks within the building. But one interesting thing, and this is just Jana told, my friend said was that they were at the high school football game, and there were some kids doing what kids do, teenagers, pushing each other around and stuff. And she said, she said to herself, why is, she's looking at the school resource officer who was not, like, getting in the middle of all that, and she said, why isn't this person doing something about this? And I think that's the danger. And I said, because that is exactly, you know, not what you want them to do. You want the school people, the principals, whatever, teachers, whoever's there to take care of the discipline. It's not, it's not a disciplinary position. But the reason I bring this story up is because I think that there are going to be people in the community that look at and say, why aren't you doing this? And we have to be very, very clear about what this position is, not only to the people in the building, but the people in the community. And with that, I'll shut up.
I'll quickly add your point that having a common police officer inherently makes people imply or infer what that role is. So, I think we would have to be intentional about what that job is, even what we call them, even if we report somewhere else that it's a police officer, we may call them something different if we want to send a different signal what that person's role is. So, that's all. I like your suggestion. Any other thoughts or comments on this?
I do have a thought. Okay, Joe's father was a state policeman. My father was a Carnegie policeman. Wonderful. I'm sure your father was as wonderful as mine. It's not the negative that some of us are thinking. So, we're going to do the best to get Joe Apple-type or George Honchar-type school policemen. Be assured, be assured.
While being cognizant that not every child in our district perceives police officers the way Joe Apple and George Honchar does, because they don't. But no, I'm not saying that has anything to do with the people that we're talking about. It's just our perception is not everybody's perception, and we have to be very, very, very aware of that. My kid may think this is a great thing. That's not every kid. And I can't go at this from the perspective that my child may feel safer with somebody walking around that looks like a security guard. So.
Piggybacking off of kind of what Director I don't know, Director Pushkar said, I think it would be to a benefit to compare statistical data that's out there in other districts who have already implemented an SPO, SRO, either model or both models, and compare to see what you discussed about discipline issues, increase, decrease, because I think many districts in our region have something of such. But we are, some districts are very diverse, more diverse than others, and so there's different demographics. Obviously, you can't compare to these that I think would be beneficial, so look at what they did and look at their doing so far.
Good stuff. Any other questions, comments? We should vote. All those in favor of Section Six, say aye. Opposed, nay. Thank you. Motion carries. Section Seven, Student Activities, there's one item. I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
Move to second.
Move to second, thank you very much. Any questions or comments? If not, vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Section Eight, Policy, one item. I'll entertain a motion to approve the one item. Move to second, thank you. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm getting paid by words today.
You're the lawyer today.
I am. On the crowdfunding policy, there is, do you have it? There's a section that says that an organization, towards the authority, it says that an organization is not granted formal recognition by the board, as an eligible organization shall not engage in crowdfunding on behalf of the district. An eligible organization is defined as a school-sponsored student organization that has been formally recognized by the board and may be granted permission to utilize crowdfunding upon proper application and subsequent approval. I think that does not provide enough clarity for PTAs who are affiliated with schools, do crowdfunding for things like transportation, for field trips, et cetera. So, I would recommend that we add a less granted written permission by the superintendent in advance of the crowdfunding or something to that effect for the second reading.
If I could piggyback off that, we did have this discussion a couple weeks ago. The definition of a school-sponsored organization is a little tricky, and there are organizations who use our name who are not technically affiliated with it. So, how do we treat that gray area when it comes to this new policy? There may not be an answer tonight, but I think it's one we have to...
Yeah, I think we take that suggestion and revisit that, that line, and make sure it's clear, and then when we implement the admin reg, that we have a procedure to implement the policy to make sure that that's solved as well.
It's gray in a couple of areas, but this is just as another. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Just a point of clarity for folks who may not know that we do the first read so that we can make comments like this. This is approving the first read. It will have to be finally approved with a second read before the policy goes into effect. Give it back to her. All right.
So, we are lawyers.
If there's any open forum, like, you will get paid. If there's a bonus round, you get a bonus round.
We don't get overtime.
If there's no other comments or questions, we'll go vote. All those in favor of Section Eight, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Old business, any director, any old business, say that to me. Director Pushkar. Any new business from any director? No. Any open forum questions from the audience?
At the superintendent forum in August, Superintendent Kreider noted that one of the proposals for addressing the issues that the district is facing today with space and stuff was consolidating the two elementary schools into an elementary intermediate. Is that accurate? So, I wanted to find out what were the key factors as to why the board chose to keep the elementary schools as is and do capital improvements on Carnegie and raise taxes rather than doing the consolidation? What was the cost-benefit analysis behind those, that decision? And why was that decision made?
I'm not sure we have time for all of us tonight, but I would, I think we can summarize a couple of them. The analysis of the benefits of having combined schools versus separate schools is a long analysis in itself, and we've reviewed it a couple of times over the years. I think we've run out of space, specifically Carnegie Elementary now. If we had combined schools, there's still that same space issue, it just might be spending money in both buildings or even additional buildings. So, I don't think on the surface, the combination would have been money-saving in any way. So, in fact, it may have ended up costing us more for renovating two different buildings. So, the question you asked could have a three-hour, you know, meeting to suss out all the nuances of a very, very complex topic. Maybe at a future superintendent forum or maybe at some other event, we can get into more detail. I don't know if any board members have any thoughts about how to tackle it. Really, a legitimate question, but one that has a lot of complexity to it.
Well, I know that over the years, we've talked about having, you know, all the grades in one building, another building, you know, and the kids move through the sections together. And, you know, it's been something that's been talked about for a long time, and quite frankly, I think a lot of folks like their neighborhood schools. That's a, that's a big factor. I don't know that we saw the, you know, it's not simply a cost thing, but it's also a programmatic thing, and I don't know that there were great advantages to that either. Certainly not that I saw.
Are there specific aspects of that that...
No, I was just curious what were the reasons behind the decision that was made and why that wasn't chosen.
I think, I've seen some research, it's a little bit old now, but some research that shows that neighborhood schools tend to foster a real connection, a sense of belonging for the students that live in that neighborhood and attend their neighborhood school. When you bus people to another neighborhood, you lose some of that. I think we've all seen as our children attend our local school, they go to the high school, there is, some of that neighborhood component is missing when they go to the high school. So, they eventually reform friendships and they form a new community there, but some of that closeness that we have in the neighborhood schools lost when they go to the high school. So, I think that was, for me, that was a factor individually.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board member? Any other open forum questions?
I just would like to suggest, and you guys have been talking about, I know, Dr. Kreider, you have forums with systems, but I, you know, as someone who's planning in the future to run for school board, I think it's really important that you guys maybe hold your own community forums in the neighborhoods you live in. And so, setting up at a coffee shop, say, hey, I'll be here at this time, come down and talk to me, because I can tell you as a working mom, unless somebody posted on Facebook, like, thank you for posting about tonight's meeting, like, I get lost in it. It's like, I work full-time, then I come home, I do sports, I do that. But, like, I wouldn't even recognize half of you being on the school board. I only know Kelly because she's my neighbor. And like, I think that's really important as school board members, like, people need to get to know who their person is and how they can contact you because not everybody has a cell phone. Not everybody has a computer. I suggested putting the minutes at the school so a parent could pick it up because that's how you're going to get community input. That's where it really is. People need to know that they feel heard. That's probably why more people didn't show up, because they don't know that they feel heard. I come to this meeting, but I never hear or see you again. So, like, I would suggest holding smaller forums with you guys as members of the board to hear the people you're representing. You're representing us, and your all, your jobs are all on the line, like, and so, I'm not saying that I'm taking any of them right now, but I'm just letting you know that you represent the community. And so, like, it's very important that you guys, not just Dr. Kreider, but you guys take the time to sit down with the people you represent in your district, whether it's Crafton, Rosen Farms, Carnegie, and hear what people have to say and why they're saying that. There's more issues than what's on here that people have to say about, but they don't know where to go to. That's just my suggestion.
That's a good point. Our information is on the website, so people are really interested in looking.
But people don't have access. Like, people don't have, people don't have, that's what I'm talking, I'm talking about equitable. That's equality. Everybody has that, right? Equitable is we make it possible for everybody to be able to access it. So, I don't know if you've ever seen the fence thing. Equitable is everybody has the same box, but if you're short, you can't see the fence. Or equality has that. Equitable is the short person gets two boxes, the tall person may not get a box, and this person gets one. Not everyone knows how to get to the library, has transportation, has a cell phone, can get on the internet. So, you guys need to make it a priority to reach out to the people that you represent. Do community forums, know the constituents. Then it might make you, because I don't know if everybody has a child in the district, it might make your decision on some of these things a lot easier when you hear from people.
This is something to consider when we talk about our communication plan, which is another thing that all is working on, is we've talked about, you know, having board meetings not just here, but in different buildings.
This is not accessible. If I didn't have a car, I would not be able to make it here. It is not walkable. It is not accessible at all for anybody. And you can watch it online, but you can't comment. You need to think about making the, with the more diverse, making things more equitable so more people can come instead of it. Maybe you change your board meetings every other time to a different building in the district. That's how you change education.
It's part of the challenge that we have to advertise.
Become more equitable. You need to go to, people don't know. People don't know.
But as far as, like, changing dates, like, we, like, we set the schedule.
Well, I know that, but I'm saying, like, you could send a letter home in the backpacks to students, hey, our board meeting is coming up. Are you interested in coming? If you can't make it, here's a way, let's see how we can do it. Like, I'm going to start coming. coming, I haven't done that yet, but I'm gonna start coming because I wanna see change in the community, not just for my kids, but for the other kids. I love this community. I didn't grow up here, but I love it, and it's my home, and I'm not moving, and so I wanna change. I wanna see our district become premier district, where people are like, wow, I really wanna move there. That's where I wanna go. Not Charmers Valley, not Montour. I wanna move to Carnegie because of what it is. You have to, guys, look at yourselves and be like, I mean, no offense to all of you, but you're not representing the population in our district. You're not. And that's something you guys have to look at. And I know you probably are tired of hearing my voice, but how you want to make change, and the order to make change is to become more equitable and being able for everyone to access.
John, we've discussed this in the past. Why don't we make a plan to start having a meeting at Carnegie or Crafton in the next few months?
Well, we can do, if something the board is interested in doing, or if there's a reorganization meeting, is actually, it's December when we set the schedule for the entire year. That's the next opportunity to feasibly without notifications and putting things out and changing venues would be the time to do it.
But you all can set up meetings in your areas. You all can sit down with your people to represent now. That's what you guys can do.
But Brittany, couldn't the PTA meeting be that form?
Yes.
We're certainly doing that.
But we wanna see school board members. We wanna tell, we can send representatives, but you guys need to know who you're representing.
I'm saying, if we, from Carnegie.
Oh, if you came to a PTA?
Yeah.
Yes, that's great.
I'm coming. I just said, I'm coming last night.
Yeah, no, that would be a great idea. That's a good place to go, is a PTA meeting. So you can know the people.
And not that I wouldn't want to engage, because I absolutely do. In fact, that's how I met Derek, was reaching out to my community and saying, hey, I'm on the school board, does anybody wanna, you know, meet or talk? But just so you know, we all have, like, a lot of us have full-time jobs.
Oh, I'm not saying, but when you take this position, you're taking it as representing the people in your district. So I have a full-time job too. I have two little ones, I have a part-time job, and I do mentor and volunteer. But if you're gonna represent here, because I've been telling you, when I become a school board member, I'm doing that. So I'm putting you all on notice now, so. That's not an excuse. I'll be at every meeting and community and open things and saying that, so. That's not an excuse. Do better.
I think it's also to, our emails and personal cellphone numbers and addresses are on the website too, and like, I know I'm fairly active on social media. I've had a significant amount of people message me on Facebook, text me or call me, and I welcome that. I will say that publicly. Everybody, when I ran for school board, I sent out a letter to every single registered voter with my personal cellphone number and personal email on there, and I welcome that for them to do that, but I agree that this is a communication issue. We have a community Facebook page that we should be posting when our meetings are, posting the agenda before the meeting, posting a recap of what happened at the meeting, what was voted on, and that should be something that is one-timely for people to be able to see. And I know it's not, it's not gonna reach everybody, but it's...
It's hard to reach a hard percentage.
Yeah, but it's like, we've discussed it, but whether we can implement it is what I'm trying to say.
Can I make a quick comment when it comes to just equity and reaching all of our students and families? And this is just such a small suggestion, but one thing that I've always wondered is how are students and parents that don't have access to the internet and aren't able to log into Power School without a lot of assistance, how are they seeing grades? How are they seeing report cards? And they're not. And so I think that that's something that maybe we can look at as a district. I know that paper report cards used to come out, and I am all about the environment and saving paper too, but I know that a lot of parents are not accessing grades. They're not seeing grades. They're not getting one to Power School because of whether it's a language barrier or whether it's just not knowing where, not knowing how. And, you know, you're always told you can email, you can email for support, but I think that a lot of our families that aren't English-speaking families, they're just simply not seeing report cards because there's nothing being sent home. So I think that that's something to look at too, especially now that Carnegie's population is, are we up to 17 languages? Something like that.
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Nineteen. Holy cow, wow, that's awesome.
Well, if I could add along those lines, in order to get free or reduced internet access, you need to provide paper report card. And so you can't take a screenshot of Power School and use that as appropriate documentation to be eligible for that discounted service.
That is true.
One more point. I tried to share a link on Facebook with the, to the agenda. I could get, when I copied it to, and sent it to myself, I could access it, but when I put it on Facebook, the link didn't work. So it's something, if you could look at it, Mr. Carter, Dr. Carter.
I believe that was something we were gonna take away, the linking of one board policy and then two, just the agendas themselves, because the link, if you share, it takes you back to the Board Box main page, I think, opposed to the draft one, towards the agenda.
And just one more thing, like, for instance, like, when, on the agenda, it said motion to approve the school police officer position, for example. A lot of us had questions. What did that mean? Was there a job description already there and just not shared? Was this just approval to start the process? We had no idea. So if there could just be more description for the community as to what's used in the agenda items, that would be helpful.
So where are we in the development work communication plan?
Should be ready by the end of October.
We're gonna have our meeting starting in October.
So I have a question. Dr. Carter, the last time I was at the forum with you, you had, we had all asked questions about the website and the update, updating that it desperately needed. Where are we on that?
Very close. I would say probably within 10 days of launching to the public.
All right, I'm gonna hold you to that.
According to today, what is the 17th?
Yeah.
So you give me till the 27th. Deal.
I'll be emailing all of you.
I keep throwing websites, looking for stuff, and I can't find anything. I am waiting.
And I would say over the past few months, we've focused more efforts on getting the new website up as opposed to updating the old. And as I mentioned during the forum meetings, is that there are more accessible links, one just for parents that creates, gives the forum view, having the menus all on the right-hand side, variety of other quick features that will help navigate that site. Now, certainly when it goes on to launch, it's not gonna be perfect, but we also have a form and a document set up, so as you navigate the website, it's also to provide feedback. Let us know. One, tell us what your experience with navigating, did you find everything? Are there things that you're still looking for, things that would be better? And then also collecting information on how the website goes through a mobile device also, because a lot of people are accessing through a mobile, or a current one does not do that well at all.
Yeah, you can't really search.
The new one, the new one is much better, on a mobile browser.
To find the student handbook, I had to go to Google and do a search.
Any other?
Megan Thomas, Crafton resident. In May of 2023 and May of 2024, the community was surveyed. Students were surveyed. Where are we at getting that data published to the community?
For the...
The two climate surveys.
The climate surveys. Climate surveys, we initiated the first one back in '23, as you mentioned, and wanted to use that data and then also the following just as benchmark. We don't publish the results of all the surveys, but do reference them during decision-making process as far as help to guide decisions, but we don't have a plan in place to share that data broadly.
Is there a plan to do another survey in May of 2025?
Yes.
Now, as a participant of that survey, if the community or the school board is not releasing that information, I'm going to be less inclined to provide my input. So I would urge the school board strongly to provide us with some feedback and what changes were made based on that. What was realistic, maybe what wasn't realistic?
I think that's fair. Yeah, so along those lines is fair, without sharing the specific data itself, but what was gleaned from that data and what decisions did the data help move decision-making process forward?
I just don't wanna lose families' participation.
We don't get a lot of family participation, to be honest.
And have you problem-solved why that could be?
Well, yes. And so we wanna make it more accessible, get more community feedback in general. That's the whole spirit of it, is to get that feedback.
Right.
If you only get a small population of feedback, then the data that you get back is really not as meaningful as it needs to be. So it needs to be from large numbers.
How are translation services done within the district? Is it like a one person?
I'm a parent and a wife.
Oh, wow. Okay, okay.
So we do have...
We use an AI program through the AIU called TransPerfect. So we do that. We also contract with an agency called Global Wordsmith. So any legal document, we send through them. TransPerfect also is who we use for telephone communication. So not only do they have an AI program, they also have a phone program. So our teachers use that to communicate with parents. Teachers also use something called Talking Points, which is a texting device that translates their communication.
And if there was an in-person meeting, would you bring a translator in?
We would. Thank you for that.
Top of the point, one way to try and get more responses for surveys is to publish what were the benefits, what were the changes from the previous surveys, and say, this is what we did with your feedback. We hope that you continue to provide this.
After two or three iterations, you have an opportunity to see trends in the data. But after one or two, we really aren't looking, can't find many trends.
What savings are we going to realize with the consolidation of the technology applications that the district is funding today that we are reducing based on the Education Technology Committee discussion on the Assistant Superintendent?
If we have an exact number on what the savings are at this point, no.
I don't have an exact number right now.
Yeah. But I mean, that's a, that's a, probably a 2024, 2025 year-long process is fully assessing the educational technology software that we use, and then really moving into next year is looking at the purchases, but I can't say we've eliminated some costs already.
Will that be able to be rolled into some additional personnel positions that we need to fund?
Everything gets put back into the general budgets as far as savings and then redistributed as far as when we go through the next year budget.
Any other open forum questions?
I just added to the sheet. If we might be able to return to a remote participation, even if it's just being able to watch the meetings live, lack of attendance doesn't equal lack of engagement. We're all here because we have kids, and kids have a lot of stuff going on. So waiting a month to see minutes in recording doesn't really give us an opportunity to sort of respond to that in a timely way or prepare for the upcoming meeting. So if there's any way that that could happen, would be wonderful. And if I could offer some kudos, I know we talked a lot about sort of shortcomings and aspirations for school security, and in my depths of the internet rabbit hole, I believe we are only one of seven schools in Pennsylvania that has the threat assessment team, which is a really critical component to keeping our schools safe, whether it's mental health or behavioral issues. So I think that's awesome.
Thank you. Any other open forum questions or comments? Board members, any open forum questions or comments? All 10 motions are being moved in second. All those in favor say aye.